Where's Ken?
How you doing?
I'm still in there.
I don't know. I'm assuming he's, he's going to come.
He didn't respond to my...
No, I saw him. I biked over here. I want to be sure.
Hi.
Um, I'd like to ask the audience if they need interpretation or...
Uh, um, I can just tell, well, where do they go if they want interpretation?
So I hope you guys are out there.
Outside, okay. All right, well, I'll just, I'll, I'll point people out there. Does that work? Okay, okay, all right. Okay, all right, all right, perfect, perfect.
Be some random...
Just, just the ones that you have.
All right. Are we good? All right, uh, good morning, everyone. Good morning, good morning, good morning. Welcome. Thank you so much, uh, for being here. It's great to, uh, to be back and have another one of these, uh, town halls. Um, thank you so much, uh, for all the questions who have been submitted so far. And if you have additional questions, please, uh, please hand them in and we will get to, uh, all the questions we can this morning. If you require interpretation or any assistance, uh, in completing the, the, the question cards, our staff is available to assist you. Uh, there is Ebony right there. She is waving her hand. If you need assistance, uh, please, uh, please get with Ebony and she will assist in any way you possibly need. Um, all right. Um, so our goal here is to get to as many as your questions as possible. Um, and I understand, uh, Councilman Agiri will be on his way shortly. The Vice Mayor is unable to make it this morning, so she will, um, she will not be here. Um, but, uh, what, um, what I'm gonna do today, last time we started with, uh, with everything else and we spent the final hour with housing, I think we'll flip it this time. We'll start with housing and, uh, and then go to everything else, if that works, uh, for folks. Um, I feel like, uh, we have, uh, probably a preponderance of housing questions today, so we'll, um, we'll start with that. And again, I try to present, um, I try to present, uh, every side of these things here and make sure all the questions, or at least all the perspectives, are, uh, are represented. Let me start with, um, with this one and why don't we go to, uh, Councilmember Bagley first, if that works? I went with Councilman McPike first last time, right? You know?
Yeah, I was thinking about that.
Oh, sorry, sorry.
Yeah, go for it.
I got mine done, so, um, all right. Uh, I, I'm assuming this is, yeah, okay. Uh, "These proposals are a good first step in addressing our housing shortage and, shortage and rising cost of living. We can and should do more. Is that the plan?"
I love this question. Um, so, good morning, everybody. Um, thank you for being here. Uh, thanks for submitting your questions in advance and on these cards. Um, so what's interesting about this phrasing of this question, I think before I dive into the substance of it, is I think what it introduces to the group and to the city is that, um, we are hearing from both sides on this process. Um, we are hearing from people frustrated about, you know, um, potential impacts and, um, and then we are hearing from people frustrated, and maybe frustrated isn't the right word, but, but expressing themselves on, um, the, the lack of, of, of impact, you know? Um, so, uh, I, I, I just want to note that at the outset, that, that there's been conversation on both sides. Um, in terms of, and I think what the question boiled down to is, is there, is there possibilities for us to do more than is what is currently proposed in the, um, the, the proposals themselves and the, the related text amendments? I think, um, to start to get into the weeds a little bit, um, it, it varies by proposal. I think some of them, um, are, are, are at sort of the current legal and studied boundaries of, of what we can currently do. Um, we've only studied an issue, but so far, we've only, um, you know, staff and our, our city attorney's office. Um, so to some extent, um, that will, um, limit our consideration to go farther or differently in November. Um, for other areas, um, I think there are questions that, that, um, members have asked, that, that, that the public have asked, that poke at the edges of some of these things. Um, you know, I'll, I'll bring up parking, perhaps as, as one example. There's a, there's an element of the zoning for housing proposal that speaks to, um, enhanced transit areas and, um, reducing parking requirements in those enhanced transit areas. So I know an area, that's one area where I think we are asking some questions about, well, how are we defining the scope of what is an enhanced transit area? Um, what would be the impacts if we expanded that definition? Um, what would be the impacts if we considered, um, changing parking requirements in other areas of the city? Um, to be clear, I am not saying we are going farther. I'm not saying there's a specific proposal on the table, but in an effort to answer the question and acknowledge sort of where some of the, um, the feelers and the, and the, the research is being pushed, I think that's a good example of one, where the current proposal is not the, the end-all or the, the, where you'd have to stop, where there is more room to maneuver. And, uh, you know, I defer back to my colleagues and the mayor if I've captured that accurately.
Um, Councilman Gaskins.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Councilman Bagley, for starting us off. I would just add, you know, when we think about the housing challenges we face, you know, we're dealing with issues related to affordability, we're dealing with issues related to access, to quality, there are all of these different dimensions. And zoning for housing really focuses on the production and the supply side of that conversation. So when I hear, uh, the question about, you know, is there a plan for more conversation? I would say yes. I mean, we have to have conversations about protection and how do we keep people in their homes? How do we create more opportunities for seniors to be able to age in place? How do we, um, you know, a- address issues related to preservation? In many parts of our city, we have an aging housing stock, where we're seeing pipes burst, where we're seeing, you know, inhabitable living conditions. And so being able to talk about what happens to those, uh, those housing developments and what's next for them. So I would just add that I think this is a multi-pronged conversation. It has to be because there are multiple different solutions. And so this is one, I, I think the question had the one first step. I do think this is a first step, a good step, but there are gonna continue to be conversations as we continue to understand more and dive deeper into what are all of the different housing needs and challenges and opportunities that people are facing in our community.
Uh, Councilman McPike and Councilman Chapman.
Yes, um, to sort of go a bit further on something that Councilmember Baglo was saying, um, when you look at the proposals that we have now, uh, they touch on a number of different areas, but, um, as Councilmember Bagley said, we, in some of these areas, we have limits on what we can do to adjust because we've only talked about, if we haven't talked with you all about something, if we haven't posted about doing a certain kind of action, we can't introduce that at the last minute. But if you look at the reports that the staff has produced, this isn't the end of the conversation. There is a plan for a phase two. Um, and we want to hear from the public about what more we want to see in a phase two there. What topics did we not get to and dig into in this round that we think could further help us generate both affordable housing, more housing, but better housing across the city? So please stay in communication with us. Um, if you talk to us and you have an idea for something that we, you think we missed in this round, please understand, we may not be able to add that now, but we are definitely interested in hearing. Um, and if you have, again, if you have concerns about we're going too far on this round, we want to hear that as well because we have the ability to adjust certain things, um, in, on the dais in, uh, November. But right now, we're focused on these proposals and going far beyond them is going to require a second process, which is already something that staff is in the planning stages of.
Councilman Chapman.
In short, I mean, I'll echo much of the comments of my colleagues. In short, yes, this is definitely a first step versus the final step. I think, um, policy is always evolving in housing, uh, particularly around zoning, and so, uh, you, you take something like, uh, transit-oriented development. We've been talking and working on that as a city for the better part of probably two decades, uh, and it's always evolving. And it's gonna continue to always evolve because transit is evolving as well. Uh, and, uh, what, the opportunities that we have in the city around our transit areas, whether they be metro stations, whether they be bus hubs, uh, we will continue to talk about how we take full advantage, uh, of that opportunity for access, uh, and for housing. Uh, and so I do, I, I would hesitate for anybody to say, uh, this is it, this is gonna be all that we're gonna do, um, because I think the, the housing market itself, it continues to evolve, and so we have to make sure our policies evolve to keep up with that as well.
Councilman Agiri.
Uh, first off, apologies for my slight tardiness, and I'm gonna assume I know what the question is just from hearing what some of the responses are. Um, but I, I don't know if this was mentioned yet, but I think it's worth noting, um, you know, directly across the street from us, we have the Lineage, which, you know, years ago was, uh, was Ramsey Homes, and I remember, that was the first time I actually, um, came and spoke in front of a city council meeting to give public testimony and to the importance of creating different housing opportunities and taking advantage of some of the zoning that we have. Um, there was a lot of pushback, you know, it was, people called it Ramsey Towers, that it was gonna tower over everything and, you know, block out the sunlight. And as you could see, if you notice across the street, you know, it fits into the neighborhood quite well. And, uh, as my, my colleague mentioned, we're trying to do these types of things around, uh, transit hubs. And where's the metro? Couple blocks away. So this is a, a perfect example of some of the things that we want to achieve. I know with the zoning for housing, it's different because we wouldn't have a complex as large because we're trying to put things within the existing envelope of the lot. Um, so, you know, as it stands now, the largest thing you would see is a fourplex, but, um, like I said, I just wanted to, to take the time to note, uh, a good, great project, actually, because it's 100% affordable. There aren't any units there that are, you know, over 80% of the AMI, I believe, so.
Okay, um, I'm gonna read two questions together. I'm gonna give these to Councilman Chapman. So, uh, "Changes to zoning of single-family homes should be off the table as a tool for creating more housing. 80% of the city's property taxes are paid by homeowners. I would bet that 80% of Alexandria's homeowners have no idea how the city intends to change ordinances that will directly and profoundly affect their quality of life. It's no way to treat your taxpayers, keep them uninformed, moving the goalposts on a complex issue and ramming it down our throats." The second... That was a question? That was a question. Um, the second, the second one is, "Changes to zoning ordinances should be put to referendum after more information, clear information is provided to single-family homeowners. Residents are paying 80% of the property taxes to make these changes. Without referendum is authoritarianism, not democracy." Mr. Chapman.
Okay, um, so, so I'll first start off, um, with a couple of, of, of basic pieces within each of those questions. And I'll, I'd love to chat with either of those folks about kind of how they got to that percentages of 80%. Um, because as we talk about, um, if, if you look at the breakdown of who's paying what taxes, um, you'll find that 80% of residential, um, property, what is it? I think residential property owners are paying 80% of the taxes. Um, I, I'd love to talk with those individuals about how they got to that number and how that number is incorrect. Um, but looking at their overall, uh, question, uh, I do think, um, this council staff has really tried to, and with you being here, your example of that, we have tried to, in every way we think we can, um, get information out about what we're doing as a city. Uh, we continue to do that. We continue to hit social media, e- every type of media, not even going into specific examples, because we don't want to hide from the conversation. We've made that very plain, very plainly known. Um, if there's other opportunities, I, I know at the last, um, town hall, I spoke with a, a young woman, um, about some other things that we can do in terms of getting into the kind of very necessary neighborhoods, uh, to inform people, and I've addressed that with staff and how that's possible or not possible. And so we're willing to take any comments and any suggestions about how we get the word out, because again, we're not looking to hide, uh, from having this conversation. We need you in the room. We need you participating, giving us your feedback, regardless of what that is. Um, we want that feedback. We want those questions. Will we have conversation about percentages? Abs- hopefully, absolutely. Um, and so we want to get all the facts correct as well, uh, but we're not hiding from this conversation. If there are ways for us to improve the conversation and the communication, help us, help us with that, uh, because this is something that we want to get out to the community, uh, to have a discussion about. Trying to make sure I covered it. Thank you for putting two questions into one, Mr. Mayor. Um, and I'll follow up with whoever, uh, afterwards, and I know, uh, all of us will probably be available as well.
All right, uh, Councilman McPike, Councilman Gaskins, uh, Councilman Agiri and Councilmember Bagley. You, you were not, okay. So Councilman McPike, Councilman, uh, Agiri and Councilman...
I think it's really important to note that the zoning for housing proposal is a set of eight different tools, um, that touch on housing in industrial areas, our CDD, our Comordinated Development District Policies, our, um, policies for allowing bonus density in certain parts of the city, uh, the policies around transit-oriented development. Of all eight of these policies, staff is projecting over 10 years that they're gonna add about 2,800 homes to the city. In the single-family home zones, the projection is that 66 lots, producing about 120, 130 units, is all that we're looking at. So ours, our housing challenge is, it's, it's immense in this region, in this city. It is a reality that impacts people every single day who struggle to make their rent payments, who have to make choices between paying for their home or paying for clothes for their kids or food for the table. So we're taking this very seriously and we're taking it on comprehensively. And when we talk about single-family home zones, which I live in, I live in a single-family detached home right over by Alexandria Hospital. Um, if we're trying to take on a challenge this big, I don't think that we should say, well, this part of the city doesn't have to contribute to taking on this challenge, that this part of the city doesn't need to, to be a part of the solution. Particularly when what we're saying here is that we're coming up with a way to integrate these zones into being part of the solution, but it's a very small impact. It's 66 lots across the city projected over the next 10 years. So I find it interesting that we're talking about a project that involves eight tools, 2,800 homes that we hope that we'll be able to produce, but of, the conversation is focusing almost entirely on very small changes in an area that's gonna produce about 66 renovated units. I also think it's important to remember that the previous council, uh, created an ADU ordinance that through a, a simple administrative procedure, any, basically any lot in the city can add an ADU. So in a lot of ways, we already allow two units on virtually every single-family home lot in the city today, um, if you go through a simple administrative approval process. So it's important, I think, to sort of talk about the scale of what we're talking about. And, um, I also think it's important to know that, like, we want to hear from everyone, opponents and supporters of this project. You know, I'm happy to meet with whomever wrote this question, um, if folks have emailed, I've been attempting to respond, uh, to every email as thoroughly and completely as possible to address the concerns that people are raising, um, because we were elected, you know, in an election that dealt a lot with housing issues. And those conversations we had then informed what we told staff last year, which has produced the product that we're gonna be voting on in November. So this is a, this is a very involved process. Feedback and input from the community has been a large part of it, and I hope that we can continue to have positive feedback, but I would love it if we could stay away from words like authoritarianism, because i- in an authoritarian environment or country, you don't get to s- ask a question like that at a town hall. There isn't a town hall. There isn't elected officials who are willing to communicate with you, to hear your concerns and try to address, and address them. You know, we may not agree, but I want to talk to you about this. I think all of us want to talk to you about this. But the ability to have that communication declines rapidly the more that we throw words like authoritarianism or tyranny into a conversation, which this is actually participatory democracy that we're undertaking here, and I think that we should actually be proud that we're having such an open conversation about such an important issue.
Uh, I think Councilman Agiri, then Councilmember Bagley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and, um, you know, I agree with my colleague, Councilman, um, McPike, and, you know, I would go a little bit further in saying that, you know, part of our duty as elected officials is to push back on misinformation and disinformation. Um, number one, you know, in trying to be a transparent government and being accountable, all you have to do is go to alexandria.vaa.gov backslash budget, um, and you could go to the budget in brief, and right there, it'll tell you, "Proposed general front revenue, 36.9% residential real estate property tax," right? Not 80%. So that's, that's, that's number one. Um, number two, you know, if you're fortunate enough to, to own a home, um, and it's not to say that you're not paying because the prices are, are, are high here and they've been getting higher, and if you're even more fortunate to have already paid off your home, you know, you're still paying the residential taxes, and that's been increasing as well because of property values, but we can't discount that renters pay taxes as well. Um, renters pay a lot of taxes because it passes through from the commercial property down to the renter. Um, and, you know, the big thing with the renters is unfortunately, uh, because of the state that we live in, we don't have, uh, controls on some of the percentages. This council tries to set suggested guidelines, um, which I think is standing at, what, maybe 3% to 5% right now? Um, but we know renters that are getting 15%, 20% rent hike increases. So these are things that we need to be cognizant of. And, um, on the authoritarian and ramming down our throats, I mean, this has been a multi-year process. This isn't something that we've been trying to hide. This is something that we're openly here having a conversation. As, as was said, you know, if this was an authoritarian situation, we wouldn't even be here. We wouldn't be sitting here in front of you, and this would have been passed whenever somebody had a rim, whim, right? So somebody would have had a whim, would have gone to a vote, and it would have passed. We would have had zero conversation, as opposed to a multi-year process, which we are undertaking. Um, so, I'll, I guess I'll leave it at that.
Councilmember Bagley.
Thank you. Um, yeah, I, I want to thank my colleagues for sort of commenting on the larger, you know, um, context. So two, two points I want to make, and I'm not trying to put my colleagues on the spot because I think everybody's gonna raise their hand when I say this. You know, who amongst us on the dais, or on the tables here has appeared before like an HOA or a neighborhood body? Um, you know, it's, I've done it, so, um, I, I throw that out there as well. If, when we have been invited, um, my colleague and I went to Lynn Haven together, I think, um, you know, I've been to Delray, I think, with, with, um, Councilmember McPike. So, um, just to add that, just, just another bit of sort of factual context is, um, all of us here today have appeared before HOAs, neighborhood organizations. I think we're all headed to Taylor Run together later today, um, for, for, uh, gathering there. Those are all opportunities to ask us questions, um, and, and have us answer them. Um, I also, I was kind of surprised, and I'm gonna shine a light back on my colleague here for a moment, that, Councilman Chapman has been one of the most vocal members in my time on council for rebalancing our tax base in the city to, to sort of grow. So for what it's worth, um, to the extent the number isn't 80, I do think there is a shared acknowledgement among, amongst this council that we, we need to, you know, that balance would be better if it was more like a balance. Um, and so we are taking steps, you know, in, investing in our ADP, they're just relaunching their small business, um, process, uh, but we are conscious of the desire to, to grow the, the, the tax base, to diversify the tax base. So regardless of what the specific number is, I, I don't want to just dismiss the concern out of hand and acknowledge that diversifying the tax base is, is a, is a conscious effort. It's in one of our priorities that we set together, and I don't mean to, I, I keep, you know, looking over because, um, I really do think my colleague has been, um, a consistent voice, um, on that point. And we've, we've scored some good wins despite this market recently. Five Guys recently moved their corporate headquarters into the city, into a space over in Carlisle. Um, I'd phone a friend, I mean, I, I see the city manager nodding over there, but I think, um, I, I'd, I'd like to just draw that into the conversation as well, that while I stand by the general response that the, the numbers are off, um, the sentiment at its core is something we all are actually aware of and, and conscious of and working on.
Okay. Um, Councilman McPike, why don't you take this one? Alexandria ranks at the top 7% of the densest cities in the country. To add 50% more people, 80,000 people to our city is disastrous to our quality of life, so much more traffic, less green space, having to pay for more police to deal with higher crime. We already don't have enough full-time teachers that want to teach here. The city needs to solve its current problems for its current residents. Crime, flooding, traffic, your plans for more density are only going to create more problems. Density in single-family areas is the wrong direction.
Thank you very much. Um, so, I think in the, in the theme of what we've been discussing so far today about sort of correcting some numbers, um, the zoning for housing proposal is not to increase the population of the city by 50%. You might have seen some numbers floating around, about 40,000 more houses. Um, we currently have 80,000 residential units across the city, between single-family homes, apartments, things of that nature. You may see numbers being thrown out, about 40,000, uh, more units being brought to the city. The source of that number is if you took every single small area plan across Alexandria today, all of the plans that we have as a community have sat down, written, put together, planning what we want our city to be like, and you were to build every single housing unit you could possibly build under all of those small plans, you would produce 40,000 more units. But we're not actually going to, you know, see that realize in any way in the near future. If you look at what we've approved as a council and as a city, right now, we have about 14,000 new housing units planned for the next 10 years. But a lot of those aren't going to get built because they're, they're projects that get put together, um, in a certain interest rate environment or to meet certain goals of the people that are planning to build them, and sometimes these projects fall through. We work very hard when we approve a project to support them and try to get them to the finish line, but sometimes we don't. So when we talk about 14,000, we're actually talking about, that's what we've got right now. We may not even achieve that. So that's a significant step down from the 40,000 that you might have heard. Um, and then we talk about zoning for housing, and zoning for housing is a project that's about trying to make it easier to create housing in a diverse wa- set of ways, to create diverse kinds of housing across a number of different price points. The projection is that's gonna create, as I mentioned earlier, about 2,800 additional housing units, uh, over the next 10 years. So that takes us from 14,000 to 16,800 over the next 10 years. If we were to build out everything that we've currently got planned, actually approved, I should say, and zoning for housing hits its maximal, uh, output and produces what we expect, that is si- very significantly different than the number that we're talking about there. But the challenges that the question raises are very real, right? We do have issues with flooding. One of the ways that we address flooding is redevelopment. When new buildings are built in Alexandria, they're held to a higher standard in terms of retention of water and avoidance of runoff than buildings that were built 20, 30, 40 years ago were held to. So when we put that new, um, those new buildings in, they're, they're held to a higher runoff standard. Those reconstructions also gives us opportunities to go in and deal with some of our underlying infrastructure problems, to improve water mains, to improve the, uh, infrastructure that we have, to move water, to address things of that nature. We're also, you know, we're working on the flooding issue, so I'll, I'll move off of that one shortly, uh, with some major investments in Delray, Rosemont, some major investments in Old Town to, um, you know, expand pipe capacities, to address maintenance issues, and we have a ad hoc advisory group of residents who have been helping the council make decisions along, along that. When we talk about our schools, every time we do a development project, when we talk about traffic, every time we do a development project, we look at the possible impacts of that, and we build into our own work plans the support that we need to put in to minimize those impacts and to make sure that if, if a project is creating externalities, that the funds that we give for the project help us to address those externalities. So we will continue to do that under the zoning for housing proposals. We will continue to do that under any development proposals that come before the city. Um, we take a look at all these issues and we try to use the tools that are available to us to address them. So, you know, I want you to, I want folks to understand that we're not looking to double the population, uh, not double, but increase by 50% the population of the city in the next 10 years. Um, that's not on the table. It's not going to happen. Um, and, uh, we are very mindful of the impacts of development, and development helps us address them directly. It also improves our tax base, um, which helps us address them indirectly through being able to afford to support our schools, to, um, address our flooding problems. Uh, and one last note I should say is that, uh, we are presently in one of the largest periods of school classroom construction in city history. We're, we're building schools at a rapid pace, increasing capacity, and we're also looking at projections that say that ACPS's enrollment is gonna flatline over the next several years. So we are in a process, we're a part in this process of addressing our student, uh, population issues, where I think we're reaching that parity that we've been hoping to achieve, and we're going to work very hard to stay on top of it.
Um, Councilman Gaskins, and then Councilman Chapman.
Thank you. Um, so the way I come to this, my background is in public health and urban planning. So I'm often thinking about, how do we plan, but also how do we think about the impacts on people's health and well-being as we do that? And I often get this question on, you know, why make Alexandria as dense as possible? Why do we want more density? Why density, density, density? And I can tell you, in my master's programs, both of them, there was never a class I took that was called, you know, how to become the densest city, or how to add more people. That's just not, that's not how the training worked. Oftentimes, we started with, what is the problem? What is the problem we want to address? And in this case, I think if we go back to the why, we are asking ourselves, what will it take to ensure that anyone who wants to live here can live here, and those who already live here can stay here and have a diversity of housing options and price points? If I am somebody who's been in this city 35 years and I'm looking for that next option, maybe that is a smaller townhome, maybe that is an apartment, maybe that's a condo. Right now, not a lot of those options exist, and if they do exist, they may not be at the price you can afford it. the price you can afford it. I look at folks in my neighborhood where, you know, I'm in the bracket as a young mom, where I'm surrounded all the time with playdates and young families, and people will say, you know, I don't know what my next housing is because I would love for my kids not to share a bedroom, but the next housing option where they don't share a bedroom is hundreds of thousands of dollars more than I could be approved for. And so when we talk about density, I love how my colleague, Councilwoman Kirk Pike, keeps talking about these proposals as nine, because density and the tools we have, that's one of the tools. And I think being able to think about it not from that as the end goal, but how does density in a community where we're not getting wider, how does that help us achieve options and create new spaces and create new supply in order to be able to give people those housing options? I'd say the other piece of the question that I wanted to touch on is around this piece around the other problems that we face. I don't think there's anyone who sits up here and doesn't recognize that every one of the things mentioned in the question are real issues and real challenges. The other part of the planning education that we talk about is you cannot plan in silos. When you build a building, you're not just building it to build it. You're thinking about what is that building connected to? Where can people walk to? Where's the nearest job center? Where's transportation? Where's childcare? Where's the park? Where's the place that they can go access open space? And so all of these things are thought about, not just in a project-by-project basis, but through our long-range planning, through our small-area planning. And so I think sometimes, you know, it's hard because you go to the website and you're looking at one thing, and it's like, they didn't talk about this. But actually, we are talking about it, and it is connected, and it is very real things we're wrestling with. And then the final piece I just wanted to touch on, just to kind of show how this is connected, I think the question mentioned crime. So you might go to our zoning for housing website, and you're not going to see a section on there that says crime, because crime and zoning, they're not the same tools, they're not the same part of our organizations that we address. But if you go and you look at the work that we're doing through APD, you'll notice that, one, we were one of, we were the first locality to pass collective bargaining for our police officers. We made an intentional decision that we were going to make an investment in the recruitment, the retention, and the hiring of more officers, because we recognize as a growing city, that is an investment we have to make. You'll also, you may not be on the APD page, but now let's maybe pivot to DCHS or some of our youth programming, and you'll recognize that we have intentional focus on preventing, getting to the root causes of why our young people are engaging in activities that we do not want them to, from mentorship programs to after-school programming. And so I just want to say that to say that, like, all of these things are things we're not just thinking about, but we are actively planning and looking at the connection as part of this housing conversation, because there's no way you can plan in a silo, and there's no way you can think about these issues, especially if we are passionate and intentional about quality of life and health and well-being, without looking at all of these pieces together. And I know, I mean, I speak for myself, but my colleagues, I'm sure, or even our city staff, if there's something you can't find, or you're like, where is this on the website? Or how do I find the stormwater infrastructure plan? How do I get to the roads plan and the paving plan? We are all willing to help you and to walk through how those pieces connect and how we look at them.
Okay. I'm going to go to Councilwoman Gaskins on two questions here. Changing zoning ordinances for single-family homes is not worth the price for a small gain. We lose permeable surface, grass, old-growth trees, which we know developers will take down. We lose air quality because of all these new units will come with cars, and most of our residential units do not have a metro near them. And aesthetics matter. When you eject multiplexes into single-family communities or townhome communities, it changes the aesthetics. People want to live in something attractive, not worth destroying neighborhoods. And the second one is where or what are the environmental impact studies regarding all of this construction?
So the first thing I'd say is I want to echo something that Councilmember Pike, Mike Pike, said earlier about when we think about the challenges we face, this is a whole city problem. And so to me, I think that, you know, while we may not be getting thousands of units in the single-family zone, I think we are getting something, we are getting a piece where every part of our neighborhood begins to contribute to the challenge we are trying to face. And so I hesitate with the language or the, you know, the notion of just take single-family zones off the table. I think the question mentioned some pieces around aesthetic and different, this again goes back to exactly what I was talking about, around the comprehensive planning. Every single thing that we approve in this community has design guidelines, has a review process. I see Mr. Moore, it's in the back, our planning director, but we have been very intentional in thinking about, you know, how do we not only create new spaces, but how do we think about how those spaces make people feel? What do they experience as they walk through our community? And so that's all part of this process as well. I do want to say, though, that we should be very clear that when we have those requirements and we add other pieces or kind of decorations to it, that also impacts affordability. So I just want to say that, that, you know, those things do not come without a cost, but they are something that we have set as a community are a priority to us. And when any building is built in any of these new areas or new spaces, there will be reviews, there will be comment process, there is feedback and design requirements. That's part of the reason why in this proposal, it talks about, you know, not going beyond the existing building envelope or FAR and so forth. So I just want to, I just want to put that piece out there. I think the second part was around kind of the environmental studies and impact. I would say, no, there probably is not a study on every single home that is built and kind of the design, the environmental impact that you do have. But this goes back to, again, kind of that comprehensive look. We have a brand-new Office of Climate Action. We also have folks with environmental planning background on our planning staff. We have arborists, we have landscape planners, we have all these other people who are bringing expertise to help us think about the impact of our developments. And when we develop, we are, you know, requirements in there for stormwater runoff. We have new programs to incentivize folks in their landscaping and managing the impacts they make. We have new programs related to helping you solarize your home and sort of other things that we can do to limit those impacts as well.
And I'm going to turn it over to Councilmember Bagley. I want to jump in myself on this one for a little bit, because I do, I have gotten this question a lot, is the why we, given how small of the housing creation is assumed as part of the single-family change is why? Like, why not just leave it out when it's such a small number? And I do think, you know, when we went into this effort, I think we were trying to do two things. I think we were trying to address housing supply challenges, and we were also trying to address some of the historic inequities that have existed in our city. And many of our single-family neighborhoods were built originally with restricted covenances that were designed to limit who those properties could be purchased by. And we've done a lot of research as part of this effort and uncovered a lot of those documents, and you can, you can read them on the city's website. And you'll see that while in each one of those documents, there was obviously a particularly heinous provision that limited who could buy those properties based on the race, the color of their skin, there were other provisions. And in 1948, the Supreme Court invalidated the particularly heinous provisions, even though they persisted for quite a bit longer in those documents and were nominally enforced for a while longer, even though they weren't necessarily legal. But I think what you found is, over time, the remainder of those documents found their way into the city zoning code, and they persist today in the city zoning code. That's not to say all those provisions intended, were intended to achieve the same result as the particularly heinous provisions. However, they, I think if you look at the city's demographic map and you look, you overlay it with our zoning map, you'll find that they have basically achieved a lot of the same result, and that's not an accident. And so I think part of this effort has always been to not just look at housing supply, but also look at how we ameliorate some of the impacts of those inequities. And that's why I think it's, any suggestion that we kind of exclude single-family zone from this discussion, while I think ultimately it wouldn't necessarily change the numbers that dramatically, I think it would leave us wanting in trying to address one of the paired goals of this entire effort.
Councilmember Bagley.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Wilson, for, you know, injecting that back into, I think, we're forty-five minutes in and that piece hasn't come up yet, and I think it's a valuable historical context for the work. And I assume at some point we're going to touch on street renaming potentially. I know we got some questions in advance.
It's on the other side. It's the second hour.
That's the second. But I dropped that pin here because it's an example of, you know, we can, we can do two things at once. We can acknowledge, we can proactively address steps that were proactively taken in the past, and I think there's actually some overlap in our thinking on zoning for housing, which the mayor just, you know, raised, and on street renaming, which is, you know, you, it is our role to examine and assess and proactively address things that were proactively intentionally done in the past. So I'm just linking those concepts briefly. And then to return to some, I was trying to keep track of everything Councilwoman Gaskins raised, because she covered so much, so I appreciate all the things she touched on. I'm going to add one or two other quick items. I think she said this, but the building envelope is not part of the current discussion. And so to the extent the question included things like loss of permeable space, tearing down trees, factually, I mean, I'm not going to go to bed for every single situation and how the house is positioned on the lot, but the building envelope is not currently in the proposals, meaning setback, FAR, permeable space, all those items will remain. So if your lot is large enough that you could, you know, rebuild from single-family to duplex, you would still have to honor those core pieces. And so I just wanted to reiterate that point, not to suggest it wasn't, it wasn't said, but I just didn't catch it in my notes. And then I want to also mention, in reference to parking, and I don't know if it was in the question or if it was in the answer, but parking has a cost in building as well. And so that's also why this is part of the conversation. Parking spot can cost as much as an extra $10,000 for each spot in a building. So, you know, that gets passed along and, you know, and maybe even higher, you know, but I'm starting with a low number that to me still sounds significant. My point is, that cost doesn't just get absorbed by the builder, they pass it on in the ultimate cost of the unit, you know, whether it's rented or it's sold. And so part of our analysis of parking, part of our potentially requiring less parking is also tied back to the cost of the resulting building. And a person being able to choose, I, you know, choose to pay less in my home knowing that I will not be able to park in, you know, in my building, I will make my other choices accordingly. So, you know, these things, the silo, the way my colleagues sort of talked about how these things work together, you know, for me, the parking piece of this story is a good example of environmental impacts, transportation, funding, and housing, you know, unsilowing them and bringing them into the same conversation is a good example of that, because the more we create spaces that are walkable, bikeable, close to transit, we can reduce housing costs ironically, because the building will cost less, because they won't have had to build parking. We will reduce our transit-related emissions, because more people will walk, bike, roll, and so we will improve the environment, you know. It's a way to check several boxes at once. And I would, the last thing I'd note is I would invite people to come walk around my neighborhood, Old Town North. You know, there's a lot of new build there, and we have some of the widest, loveliest sidewalks, you know, that have bio-retention swales? I think that's, okay. You know, have these bio-retentions, bio-swales. My dog, I'm constantly having to invite him back out of them. But they are a part of the intentional sidewalk structure that has trees, that has naturally, I think intentionally selected grasses and designed to absorb water, designed to create that, you know, barrier between housing and the street. And then we have wide sidewalks that are safe to roll, to walk with my bike, to do all those other things. And so I think there are some nice examples, the Gables being one of them, of sort of, I see a Gables resident just nodded at me, but of somebody, of where we can build new and honor environmental goals and be inclusive from a transportation perspective.
Councilwoman Pike.
Thank you. One other point that I want to make sure that we're considering here is in the question, we have duplexes sort of scattered amongst single-family homes in large areas of the city, and they're integrated well. Three of my colleagues who are on the stage today were with me on Thursday when we attended the Alexandria Beautification Awards, and one of the winners of a beautiful piece of architectural design in Alexandria was a duplex that had been rebuilt in one of the neighborhoods of our community. So we already have, in many places of the city, these sorts of gentle density options that are part of the community. People love those neighborhoods. They feel just like any other house. There just happen to be two, maybe three families living in them. I also want to point out that if you look at the set of tools that we're talking about, most of the units that would be produced by the other tools are going to be apartments. There might be some condos, there might be a couple of townhouses, but mostly we're talking about apartments. And a question we often get from folks when we're talking about affordable housing is, what about affordable housing options or more affordable housing options that people can purchase and not simply rent? And when you're talking about Alexandria land, you're talking about the cost of building here. If you're talking about those things, you're trying to figure out how do we make it more affordable to buy a home? A duplex, you know, I don't want to use a term from another part of our region here, but there is a layer that you might say is in the middle that is kind of missing in some of our housing options, and duplexes often serve that role. It's a place that your kids, or my kids, or anyone's kids who want to come back to Alexandria to start their family, they don't have a ton of money because they just got out of college, but they have a good job, they might be able to buy a duplex and start living there and eventually move into someplace different. It's an option for people who are older, who want to stay in the community that they live in, the neighborhood that they love, but they don't need a giant house anymore, but they could use half that house, a space about half that size. Duplexes provide that level of flexibility. They provide a purchasable option that is more affordable for people. And that's why I think when we look at the single-family home zones, we're talking about gentle density, duplexes, triplexes, some quadplexes. We're talking about options that are going to give people better choices that fit their budget, but also provide better, you know, more of the things they're looking for in their living arrangements. And you're going to find that they integrate very well into the neighborhoods, because we are keeping the setbacks, the height, the floor area ratios in the current proposals.
Okay. This one's to Councilman Aguirre, by name. Councilman Aguirre decries rent going up much faster than taxes. My real estate and car taxes are up seventeen percent since last year. Is that acceptable to you? Why didn't council give taxpayers a break in the tax rate? And then the second one is, has the council considered programs that help low-income families purchase instead of rent? Councilman Aguirre. The second one was, has the council considered programs that help low-income families purchase instead of rent? And the first one is, why didn't council give taxpayers a break in the tax rate?
So we actually did a couple of years ago, because we did realize the impacts on the market for cars specifically and how much they went up. So we did give some relief one year. Now, we haven't continued to give that relief, and I acknowledge that, but we are cognizant of these things. And yeah, when things go up seventeen percent, it's not cool, right? Like, I don't really agree with it, but it also depends on what kind of vehicle you purchase, it's, or what kind of vehicle that you have. If you have a newer model, it's going to be more expensive. I use myself as an example, you know, for what it's worth, I have a 2006 Honda Civic hybrid. I pay zero on my car taxes, but that's because I have an older vehicle, and the city doesn't value it as highly as I do.
Well, the market does it.
So those are other things to consider, right? So the question's a little bit more complicated than just straightforward, is it fair or not, right? And then for the second part, we have a program to try and help folks to purchase homes, depending on your area median, on the area median income of your salary and your salary, excuse me, and the number of folks in your household, you know. We offer up to $50,000, I believe, for down payment for purchasing of homes, and then it kind of goes down from there depending on your salary. Part of the issue is just stock, right? We don't have a lot of units that go online for this program, because there just aren't a lot of units that are available. And then to top it off, so when I first got here in 2011, I was working in the school system, and I found out about this program, and I was super excited. I was like, oh, man, sign me up, I'm going to get these alerts. And I would get the alerts, and I'd be like, oh, cool, let's check this place out. And I'm like, I'd look at the price, and I'd be like, oh, I can't afford that on my salary, unfortunately. So while we do have this program that's existing, there are limitations to it, because ultimately homeownership is much more expensive than trying to buy down a unit and provide, you know, an affordable unit over time, a dedicated affordable unit. So these are, again, things that we're working on. It's not perfect. It's very imperfect, I would say, but we are trying to provide the opportunities where we can. And on top of that, it's not just providing money, you also have to go through a course, right? So I spent at least eight hours going through a course to make sure that I understood everything from, you know, down payment, the mortgage, making the insurance that goes with it and how the entire process works. So I think that's also important to note, and it's valuable, right? Because even if you don't end up buying a home that first time or qualify for that of... even if you don't end up buying a home that first time, or qualify for that, to purchase a home, you have learned a valuable lesson in going through that course, so that you are better prepared, once you are ready, or fortunate enough to actually purchase a home.
Let me just add on the real estate tax and personal property tax relief, and then I'm going to let my colleagues get in here. So on real estate tax, the city hasn't increased the rate in seven years. And in one of those years, we decreased the rate. On the personal property, we've, because of the pandemic-related surge in used car prices, we've actually provided two years' worth of relief. And then we continue to provide, as Councilman Aguirre noted, for cars valued at $5,000 or less, they pay no taxes. So we have tried to provide as much relief in those taxes as we can. We also do, on the real estate side, have an elderly and disabled tax relief program, as well as an abatement program. Those remain in effect for those who income-qualify. We'll certainly have a conversation in the next budget about whether those thresholds are right, and whether we have the right thresholds for those, because I know that some other jurisdictions have more lucrative programs, and I'm sure that'll be a conversation during next year's budget. So, okay.
All right. Councilmember Bagley, do you want to chime in on that?
It's funny, you rattled off, I think, a couple of the, and then, so the one thing that I would add, and Councilman Aguirre was getting there, and then I thought that, is we are working on it on the wages end as well. So you're not going to solve sort of home prices exclusively, because a brick costs what it costs, the land costs what it costs. Sort of the ship has sailed, to some extent, on like, the starter home that only cost $90,000, which is what my parents bought in 1977, I think the year I was born. No, 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 they paid $40,000 for it, and then they sold it for 90, 20 years later. But so, the housing costs, to some extent, are what they are. So we've done collective bargaining, which was referenced by Councilwoman Gaskins. We've also done collective bargaining with our firefighters. We are in the midst of a third bargaining group?
Unit.
Unit. And then we anticipate ACPS, it has an option for their teachers. We have talked a lot on this council about prevailing wages, and making sure that those in the trades receive prevailing wages, and wages that are livable. So I just wanted to add that context, that we can do, we have limited tools to limit prices, but we are pressing the levers where we can raise income and wages.
Okay. I have a question for Councilman Chapman. Let me just note one other thing on the ownership question that I think Councilman Aguirre noted, because I think this all ties together, right? We should help people make more purchases and become homeowners, but you need a unit to purchase in order for that to happen. And I've used these stats a couple of times, and I think they're important to note. So two-thirds of Virginia homeowners have a mortgage that is under 4%. A third of Virginia homeowners have a mortgage that is under 3%. If you are sitting on a mortgage of under 4% or 3%, which I am, you are never going to sell your home. And I can speak from experience on that, that I don't intend to leave my home alive. And so, and I think that gives you an important perspective on the housing supply that is out there for purchase. There is not a supply that is out there. And so if you're not creating supply, and the supply is not being put on the market, then you can have all the assistance you want for low-income home buyers or moderate-income home buyers to make purchases. There's nothing to purchase out there. And so I think the supply has to be a part of that conversation. Okay, next question's for Councilman Chapman. Why is the concentration of additional affordable housing primarily in Old Town?
I'm assuming we're talking about public housing, probably?
I got the question. You read what I got.
So I think one of the things, if you look at the city's history through the 1900s, much of the opportunities for public housing authority to get cheap land was in certain parts of Old Town. This neighborhood, for instance, the land was cheaper here. Folks weren't looking to move closer to this area. And so they had an opportunity to buy large swaths of land around this section of the city. If you look at where Alfred Street Baptist Church is, much of that land is known as the Bottoms, because it's not great quality land. It's very, it's got a lot of muddy and swampy-type property on it. And so that land, back in the 50s and 40s and earlier on, was not as valued as highly. If you look at where Quaker Hill is, used to be known as Cameron Valley, was not necessarily the most desirable land. And so properties were able to be bought by our housing, excuse me, our redevelopment housing authority. Much of the affordable housing, per se, in Old Town, and I'm not sure exactly specifically which housing they meant, was bought and is there because the land was cheap. And that's why it's there. As we, if you know the city's history, we didn't annex the West End until the 50s. And so much of that land was bought before that annexation in Old Town. And so they were only looking in Old Town. And that's why it's in Old Town. After annexation, we start to move out west and get up, purchase other lands, such as Quaker Hill, and other parts to the west. And so that's why you have such an amount of government-subsidized affordable housing in Old Town, because that was the city back at the time of that purchase, or of those purchases. It wasn't the city as we know it. And, yeah.
Okay. Other questions? Okay. Councilmember Bagley, this one's a long one. I'm going to pick an excerpt of it. So, "I've read that there is the possibility that 66 multi-unit dwellings will be built in the coming years. To come up with this number, it seems either someone has an idea of where those 66 units will be located, either city planners or other developers may have determined this information. It would be nice to know their process in determining the number 66, and where they feel they will be located. It seems many locations will be eliminated by land size or land price. I keep thinking certain parts of the city will take the hit for all of the city. It all seems a little bit secretive."
Okay. Let me try to address, I think, the 66, how they were chosen. I just made eye contact with our planning director, who, not to defer, but because I think we want to be careful about getting out good information, and I'd hate to sort of misspeak on the details of the process. A, I would invite everybody, I just did it right here just now, AlexandriaVA.gov, smack dab in the middle of the homepage, it says zoning for housing, housing for all. When you click on that, each proposal is then has its own little plus sign, and then you can click on each of those plus signs. This one is expanding housing opportunities in single-family zones. And so there is a level of detail here, that if, for this person asking, and for anybody in those zones or outside, really wants to dig into them, it really does get into R10, R12, R8. It starts to talk about the specifics. And so that 66 number is likely the result of a lot of math, to be honest, a lot of, how many of R20, R12, R8, and then of those, could a, if it's a duplex, fit a respecting setback, building height, FAR? So there was a mathematical analysis of how many of each type within them, how big are they, and what would we require if the building type were changed or bigger within those constraints? Stormwater sanitation, permeable space, parking requirements, then were layered into that analysis. And that led to, and then probably land value, and resulting sale price feeds into it. So you end up with, how many are big enough to support duplex, triplex, fourplex? Then you factor in what would be required, sanitation, stormwater, everything that you have to think about when you build. Then what does that land cost? What would they sell it for? And then you spit out a very, that very complicated equation spits out an estimate of how many, how much that would induce. How many either owners themselves and/or a developer would look at a lot and go, that's worth it. And I'll pause, and I really, I'm not trying to defer from what is a council answering your question, but I would hate to misstate the process. And I just invite Mr. Moritz, if I could, to, because it is such a fact-specific question. What do you think? Should we, no?
He gets two sentences.
Yeah.
Well, I enjoy your summary.
Okay.
And I enjoy your encouragement that they revisit that is behind, because it is all, it is all there.
That was pretty good. Councilwoman Gaskins.
That was great. I was going to add one other piece of the methodology, was that, so our staff did a ton of work on this, but we also worked with some outside consultants and researchers, and I believe in this case, we actually worked with a real estate consultant to understand, kind of in addition to everything Councilwoman Bagley said, looking at home value across the city. So there wasn't somebody who went out in a car and said, it's that one, it's that one, it's that one. Instead, they pulled the data, and they looked at, okay, when you're looking at particular homes, where are those homes that are actually kind of, that were likely to sell below market? Because that's a home that, regardless of whether you're building one, two, three, four units, a developer or somebody else is probably looking at that home. Typically today, they're looking at it to buy it, to tear it down, to supersize it. And so looking at, kind of for those homes, how do we begin to pull that data around ones that would likely be purchased and redeveloped in some way? And so you can actually, I love how everyone pointed to the website, but there is a little line there that says methodology, and it'll actually walk you through, kind of, who we worked with, how the studies were generated, where each data point came from. And you can begin to see some of those other real estate values, predictions, and so forth.
I would note, just when we did the accessory dwelling unit ordinance, which was mentioned earlier, the staff, if you look back at the original staff memo, they estimated 15 per year, and we've been almost exactly on target in three years since we've adopted the ordinance. So, there we go. All right. The, all right, these are going to come, I'm going to read four of these. They all have a similar theme, and I'm going to give these to Councilwoman Gaskins. So, "If we don't increase housing supply and affordability, where will the teachers we need to, we need to have going to live? I live in Rosemont, known as a single family housing neighborhood, but has garden-style apartments that fit in well. Are there plans to change zoning to allow more of this type of housing? I am regularly hearing from friends and neighbors, including small business owners, that they may have to move out of the city because they can't find suitable housing that they can afford. Their rents are going up, and there's nothing they can buy in their budget. These proposals will help, but will the council consider more ambitious measures, like legalizing garden apartments citywide? Under current rules, it would be illegal for me to tear out my unused driveway and plant a garden." That's my plan. "The proposed," my wife doesn't agree with that, by the way. "The proposed amendments would help, but as more people, including us and coming generations, become less reliant on expensive polluting cars, will the city consider further reducing parking minimums to reduce the cost of housing and allow more green space?" Councilwoman Gaskins. That's a lot, but I figured you could handle it.
There is a lot. So let me start with this, because I think if I remember, the first question was basically around, where are teachers? And then I think there was another one around small business owners, where are people going to live? And I think when I hear those questions, I think of it like this, if we don't do something, then the reality is, those people won't live here. And we're not just talking teachers, firefighters, police. We are also talking your waitresses, your bartenders, your phlebotomist, your nursing assistants, all of these other jobs and opportunities that make our economy work, and are critical to each of us being able to live here. And then, I think, when I think about the larger question in context, and around different types, whether we're legalizing garden apartments, we're talking about parking, I think this goes back to, again, we have nine proposals on the table right now. Each of these nine is, as we mentioned earlier, a first step to begin thinking about, how do we create more of the options we want to see? And in areas where some of that housing right now would be illegal to build today, how do we think about then using our zoning and the tools that we have available to us as a local government to make more of those things possible? I think there were some specific questions around, kind of, could we be more ambitious? Can we touch some other pieces? And I think we touched on this a little bit earlier, but I think the answer is, it depends. Some of this is really complicated. We know that for some things, we can have discussions about them, but there are legal processes we have to follow. We talked about government transparency and noticing. So there are things that we might be able to discuss now, but to drastically translate a proposal, another study or another form of communication or outreach might be needed in order to push on a policy in that way. For others, there might be things that we are able to do at this time. And I think each of us is dissecting these policies. Each of us is out in the community having conversations about where people want to see changes. It's not all nine. It might be one, that there seems to be community support and coalescing around. So that would be my answer to that. I think parking has come up a lot. I think the different styles around the garden apartments, even really thinking more ambitiously, I've received some emails around some of the things we're looking at related to townhomes. So all of these are, that's why we're having discussions like this, to get feedback. I know each of us is regularly having discussions, and we're getting memos from our city attorney about what we can and cannot do, and when we can and cannot do that. And so really thinking about what's possible now, what might be in a future phase, and what are the other things we need to continue to explore and investigate.
Great. Councilmember Pike? Yeah. I wanted to take the start of Councilwoman Gaskins' answer and extrapolate a little bit about how, we're talking about housing here, and these questions are focused on housing, but it also intersects with everything else we care about as a city. It intersects with our schools, intersects with the balance between commercial and residential real estate taxes, and how do we foster growth and development for our businesses. It impacts our commitment to reducing carbon emissions and addressing climate change. When teachers, firefighters, police officers, restaurant workers can't live in Alexandria, they have to live further out. And unless they live very specific places further out, they're probably going to have to drive in, which means that they're putting carbon into the air, they're putting stress on our roads. The house they're being built, they're moving into, is probably somewhere out in Loudoun County, where they're tearing down greenfields and building houses, and dramatically increasing sprawl, which we all know is one of the major drivers of climate change, because of all the knock-on effects that it has. Worse for us as a city, is that they're driving past schools, police departments, fire departments, businesses where they could work instead, and not have as long of a commute, which makes it harder for us to keep police officers. It makes it harder for us to hire teachers. It makes it more expensive for us to pay workers to work in our stores and our restaurants. So when we drive the workforce that we rely on further and further out of our city, we're driving up costs for ourselves, we're driving up carbon pollution, we are driving down the quality of life for them, and making it harder for us to achieve many of the things we care about as a city.
Okay. So we do have a few more housing questions, as you might not be surprised to hear, but I wanted to try to preserve time for other questions. The other two questions I have are similar to some of the ones I've already asked, so I'm going to move off of housing. Hopefully that doesn't cause everyone to get up and leave. But we have a lot of other questions that I want to get to. So, all right. I'm going to go, I'm going to answer one myself, and then I'm going to go to Councilmember Bagley with this next one. So this is the one I'll answer myself. It says, "A letter in The Times this week about the September 24th Town Hall described, quote, 'dismissive attitudes and condescending remarks,' and the writer said she was disheartened by the lack of genuine interest by some council members on concerns from community members. Is that a fair criticism?" No. All right. Next up is Councilmember Bagley. "It seems to me that the renaming of Alexandria streets is woke. Instead of embracing our diverse and at times sad history, you are trying to erase it. We are a city of slave traders and Nobel Prize winners. We should speak proudly of all we embody. What do you think?"
Wait, can I?
Yeah, sure. There you go.
Well, I, this, I'm sorry, I'm pausing, because I'm pausing. And funny, like, to that point about being dismissive, I'm actually pausing myself, because I don't want to come off as dismissive. But I am not proud of our city's slave-trading history. And, so, if I'm flush in the face, like, I'm a person who sort of is terrible at poker, but that's why I hesitated just then. Understanding history, teaching history, and naming things after historical figures are two very different things. I will, as a Jewish person, okay, I don't often lead with that part of my identity, but... but it is one thing to teach of antisemitism, to talk about the Holocaust, to, to teach about the history of, of the Jewish people in our own country and around the world. It is another to name, you know, a, a venue, a street, a location after a person who had, it's a school, yeah, who has perpetrated crimes against any other race, ethnicity, religion. I'm not sure if that's why the mayor handed me this question, but I, you know, I, I, I feel this deeply. And so, I appreciate everybody giving me a moment here, you know. I feel this question deeply because I would not want to live on a street or be in a city that took the limited opportunities to name a street, or a school, or a hospital after someone who had perpetrated, you know, evil violent acts against, you know, my community or any other community based on their identity. So my apologies for making this so, it's, obviously, it's a, it's a complicated time in a way to be a Jewish person. I am, you know, I thank my colleagues who, at meetings, have acknowledged world events and the loss of any life i- in the world right now, any life to violence and to war, but this is why things like this matter. And to, you know, there, there are 160,000 Alexandrians, right? Most of us are not going to have something named after us. That, that's just the reality. There are limited opportunities, so we should be careful and conscious and deliberate of how we use those limited opportunities. You know, we are naming Julia John's Way over by the hospital, you know, intentionally. Our street renaming process is intentionally addressing what was an intentional act. I really do invite people to look at that 1953 ordinance. You know, the, the streets that we are focusing on initially in this process were the, were the result of, of a, of an ordinance that explicitly said, "Everything on a certain side of the city, heading in a certain direction, shall be named." I mean, I don't wanna mistake, "shall be named," you know, to honor a Confederate figure. We are, that was proactive and intentional. That's what we are doing. We are proactively and intentionally, you know, addressing that. I'll pause, because this was a long-winded answer and overly emotional, but did I answer the question?
Yes, you did. Councilwoman Bagley. Uh, Councilwoman Gaskins and Councilman Chapman.
Well, first, thank you for your words, Councilmember Bagley. I always believe in being honest, so I'm gonna be honest. I have a real issue with the term "woke." I think at the end of the day, to understand history, to recognize that there are injustices, to acknowledge discrimination and the issues and the challenges that we have in this country should not be a trend or a phase or a popular word. It's, it's a fact, and it's something I think that we all should be seeking to educate ourselves on. The question or the statement talked about, you know, can we proudly recognize others? And I, I have to be honest with you, in too many places, I think we do do that already. We already celebrate things that we, I would argue, we shouldn't. And as a black woman who is a descendant of slaves, I cannot proudly walk around and celebrate people who wanted to erase me, who thought I, I wanted to say less than a person, probably was not a person. And I think that that doesn't mean that we don't talk about it. We have museums, we have walks, we have all of these things where as a city, we are saying, "Let's educate ourselves on it, let's talk about it, let's understand." But that doesn't mean we have to create monuments or signs to celebrate people who did heinous and horrible acts, who recognized that, or who wanted to recognize and believe that other people did not deserve to live and be valued in the Alexandria that we love and appreciate. And when I think about, I love how my colleague used the word "intentional," because that is what this naming process is about. When you look through the history and the ordinance that was created, that was an intentional act by the council to say, "We want to put on these signs." A sign, it, it is a testament, it is, you are taking somebody's name, or you're taking a figure, or a flower, or whatever the different things are that we use, and you are giving it a symbol, you are putting it up there to pass every single day. And while you, an individual, may not recognize or think about, "Oh, what's that named after?" There are other people who do. We represent almost 160,000 people, and as many people who have written in and said, "I think this is a waste of time," or "I don't think this is something you should do," there are so many people on the other side who are saying, "What took you so long? Why is this process so long? Why are we not naming 10 streets every year?" And I think we have to be sensitive to that. We have to take our role and recognize that we cannot just walk around and say we wanna be an inclusive, or diverse, or an inviting and welcoming city if we're not taking an intentional act to be able to represent and celebrate the people who embody that diversity. And I'll, I'll be honest with you, I don't know that I always felt this way, and the mayor probably remembers, when we got our assignments, I said, "Please don't put me on the naming committee." That's not, that's not where my goals were, where I wanted to be. But I was put on it, and I'm so glad I have been, because in this, it has also been such a tremendous education for me. I would encourage anybody, if you have not had a chance to look at the, our Historical Alexandria Resources Commission, they were charged with helping put together a list of names of notable Alexandrians, or folks who have had, with a particular focus on women and minorities who have had an impact on this community. And when you go through those names, when you see the stories of people, that it is like, "Why have we not celebrated? Why are we not teaching about them every day?" I think you will be so amazed and be thinking, maybe a street sign isn't even enough. We need to be finding other ways to honor these stories and legacies as well. And so I would encourage people, don't just stop on the page and look at the ordinance and the why we're doing this, look at the other names, look at what's being proposed. I think we've also had a lot of other people who have said, you know, if you, could you consider not doing a full renaming, but maybe a rededication? And they're sending in stories of their grandparents, they're sending in stories of other people who, they may not have been the one to do something that maybe in history we would say is extremely remarkable, but they made an impact on their neighbor. And they did something that's much more of value and more important to the things we wanna celebrate in the community than Confederate leaders. So I would just encourage folks, this is not some trend, it's not some phase, it's not something we're trying to do to be a part of national media, it is something we're doing because we care about people and we care about their experience in this community.
So, as, as Councilwoman Gaskins noted, we do choose council committee assignments every three years, and, and we do it as consensus, I don't decree. But you will see, this is now the third member of the naming committee I will recognize next, Councilman Chapman. It's Councilmember Bagley, Councilwoman Gaskins, Councilman Chapman, and I think you'll see why I chose all three. So, Councilman Chapman.
And I wanna go off talking about trends. And a trend that you may not have studied, you may not have paid attention to, is the trend of the lost cause of the early 1900s. If you have not paid attention to that and read up on it, please do so. Please educate yourself. After Confederates came back, and let's, let me start, I'm gonna give a little bit of a history lesson. If you don't know about Alexandria's Civil War history, you need to educate yourself. And I'm not trying to do that to be dismissive or, or mansplaining. But it opened the eyes for me when I really read through what happened here in our city as it related to the Civil War and men going off to war, leaving Alexandria to head off and fight for what they, they believed in. I'm not sitting here judging them, per se, for that act, but I do understand that we were not a battlefield. Individuals left our community to go fight for the South if they felt like it. Our city was inhabited for the most, the better part, I don't wanna say 95% of the Civil War, by the Union Army. We were basically a garrison for them during the war. After war is over, both Union and Confederate leaders understand that they still have to live together in a united country. And so, even though most, pretty much every member of the Confederate Army committed technical treason, they were still allowed to keep land after Reconstruction, they were allowed to still participate in the democracy of our United States, and they were allowed to go back to trying to live as they were living before the war. Their next generation, coming up through the early, late 1800s into the early 1900s, would start to focus on the stories that they heard in their childhood about what their parents and grandparents had done in the war, and trying to, you can say educate, you can say do more than that, I don't wanna make it super nefarious, but it was very intentional to talk about and raise up to a level the Confederate belief system, the Confederate Army, the Confederate officers, and put them high on a pedestal in particularly the South. You might not think we are the Deep South, and most folks do not consider us the Deep South, but we are, we are below the Mason-Dixon line. And so, this type of work was done in our communities. There is no other rational explanation for the ordinance in 1952 than that of the lost cause. So many of those names are individuals that did not step foot in Alexandria. And so Alexandrians would not know who many of those individuals are because they were not at war. They were here with the Union Army. And so, they're not hearing about all of the individuals named on our streets. They do not know even back then, the names of all those individuals on those streets unless someone like a council brings that to them and says, "This is what we're going to do, and we're gonna put these individuals high up on this pedestal." I don't have an issue with the logistics of street naming, we're talking about some of the burden on those who might get their street named, the time that it might take you, the cost, and, and trying to work out the, those logistics. But please, we need to all educate ourselves around what happened in the years and decades and generations after the Civil War, because we have not only street names, we have private schools that were formed because of this unwillingness to work together and be together as communities. And let's make it very clear, the Confederacy would not be happy with the community that we all, regardless of how we feel about this particular issue, we all have built. Because everyone in this room has probably worked or lived by somebody who is not like them, who did not come from the same background, who probably, whose family did not come from the same place, and this is not what they were trying to, this, this was not the ideals of their community at that time. I would have been working, I was a piece of property. If you don't believe me, look at the Articles of Succession. I don't wanna argue with people about that, just go read what they wrote. The, the, the very details and basics of what we are trying to do, as you can hear, you heard from my colleagues, is something that's very, very deeply for me. As many of you know, I teach black history every week. I would just wanna teach it because so few folks know it. I'm not trying to brainwash people, I'm just trying to show that, yes, we do have slave traders here in our city, and this is who they were, this is what they did, this is how much money they made, and these might have been some of the people that passed through here. We, because we are so busy in our lives, many times I find that we don't, we don't have the time to get into the depths of some of the issues that we need to. And honestly, what the Confederate and the lost cause has done is something that we each need to spend some time learning and educating ourselves. We now know, when we talk about the perspective or the bias that Fox News might have, or CNN might have, we don't talk about the bias and the perspective that the lost cause has had on our lives and this nation. Because that was definitely, if you, if you read through the lost cause and understand it and, and put it in a context with media bias, you will be astounded by what you're reading, and the bias that was brought to the forefront of a number of American communities, where individuals that they had no knowledge of, because of the work of a very small few, has elevated people that they do not know to places of prominence in their community. Like, I would gladly sit down with anybody and talk through the details of that, I have no problem doing that. I don't wanna be dismissive of, of anybody's perspectives and perspective and how they've gotten to where they feel that, the way they feel. But if you haven't read through the work of the lost cause in so many states, including Virginia, I think you're, you are missing a huge piece of, of American history.
Councilman Gary, and then Councilmember Bagley.
Um, AlexandriaVA.gov forward slash street renaming, and because despite the powerful emotional historical comments made here, there are practical implications to people living on these streets, we are aware of those, and there's an FAQ that will start to break down, what happens to my driver's license, what happens to my mail, what happens to my deed, nothing, by the way. But recognizing it's not an entirely emotional issue, it is also a, a practical one, so I'm street, forward slash street renaming. Thank you.
So I don't wanna belabor the point, and my, my colleagues have, have made excellent, excellent statements to, you know, try and enlighten folks and push back on some things and just provide general education. I'm glad that, you know, the word "woke" was, was brought up because I also take some... It's, if you were to ask 10 people what that word means, you would get 10 different answers. And not to be rude to the person that asks this question, but if you were to ask them, "What does it mean to you?", I'm sure they would have some difficulty in giving you a definition. It has become this very emotionally charged, ephemeral type of word that nobody really knows what it is, but it gives you some type of feeling, right? So that's, that's to start off. Secondly, you know, I don't think it, I can't remember the question or comment made, something was talking about erasure, but it just, you know, erasure is something that comes to mind whenever this topic comes up, and, you know, I don't think there's anybody in this room that hasn't learned about the Civil War. I, I mean, I don't care where you are in the country, you learn about the Civil War. You don't learn about what Councilman Chapman teaches on his tours. You don't learn about the plight of the Mexican-Americans in the Southwest. I mean, there might be like, a little box on one page, right? So we're, we're not talking about an erasure because everybody's still learning about the Civil War. And, you know, it's not a brainwashing to learn the full history, we're just adding pages into the history book that were intentionally kept out. You know, when, when my colleague brought up the Holocaust, if you go to Germany, there aren't any street names after Nazi generals. There's not any statues. I mean, it, it, you know, it's no secret that I'm from Los Angeles, and when I first came to the East Coast, I went to North Carolina, and I saw statues in schools and, and streets, and frankly, I was a little shocked. I mean, coming from the West Coast, like, you, when you name a school after someone, you're honoring them. When you name a street after someone, you're honoring them. When you put up a statue, you're honoring them. So that was a piece of the culture shock that I experienced when I first got out to the East Coast and to the South. But, I mean, these things are, as was said, they were done intentionally, and so this council is taking it upon itself to intentionally change course, to start to correct for, for past wrongs and past harms. And, you know, that's why I'm proud that from the moment I got onto council, my first, one of my first budget amendments was, "How much would it cost to change the street names?" And thanks to the mayor for accelerating this process, and as he mentioned, he used my budget memo to help guide some of this, so we know some of the cost. And as was acknowledged, we know that there is practical matters to this, and we will deal with that as a city, but the, the bigger issue is, is really what we're going after.
Okay. Councilman McPike, then Councilman Chapman.
Yeah. I wanna thank the, my colleagues who are on the renaming committee. I hope that folks who are here in the room or watching this later on videos see the thought and care... and care that we are putting into this, a thought, a level of thought and care that the 1953 City Council did not take when they changed all of these streets, many of which already had names, renamed them after Confederates, many of whom never set foot in Alexandria. Some of the names are so disconnected from Alexandria, they are misspelled. They are misspelled, you know, and it wasn't done to honor these people, it was done to send a message of hate, a message of exclusion to African-Americans and to those who supported what at the time was a burgeoning civil rights movement. It was a message. And I think we and our, my colleagues on the renaming committee and we as a council and we as a city are sending a message now that these people who were never part of Alexandria's past should not pretend to be a part of Alexandria's future. These are not the values of our city. And we are going to do everything we can to minimize the disruption caused by this process, but we are going to remove the stain of this bad decision and this bad message from the maps of the City of Alexandria.
Okay. Councilman Chapman.
And I, I want to wrap it up, and I think my colleagues have done it, you know, very eloquently, but I want to do it very basically. The Lost Cause has, was a hustle. Just, just frankly, just straight out, it was a hustle. It was a historical hustle. And what we are, what we are saying and the message we are trying to send is, we are no longer as a city, as residents, as a community, wanting to be hustled. We want folks that, that represent our values, that have had an impact on Alexandria itself, that know our community, have stepped foot in our city. That's what we're looking to do. That's what we're looking to talk about. And the hustle needs to be over. It needs to be over for the whole country, but that's, that's a larger, bigger conversation. But we can do our part in talking about this openly, that we have, like we have, and just saying that this hustle needs to end.
Okay. Councilman Chapman, I'm going to make you transition significantly. How about, Bluestone was supposed to be where Duke Street connects to the Beltway. Will that ever happen?
In my wildest dreams, I was hopeful that we would one day get there. Did you leave? Yul was here, I was going to make him take that question. He should take the question. We're talking about Bluestone and the connector, the Duke Street Connector. Now he says it. So that, that, that has been an issue, and I know from my earliest days on council, living where I live in the middle of the city, particularly along the Duke Street corridor, I've been very interested in how we have some real strong solutions that deal with car traffic. And a series of connectors has always been part of, I thought, the solution. The biggest challenge is, is how do you fund that? How do you pay for that? We know the cost of construction now and what that would mean. We would love to have partnership in Richmond, but Richmond frankly doesn't love to fund transportation to the level it needs to. And so do I, do I feel positive about the future of a Bluestone? Not until we really get the support from probably the federal government and federal government dollars and state transportation dollars for infrastructure that we need. Because this should not be put all on the city to have to do. We know that we are part of a regional map, particularly in this DC metro region. And if we are serious about getting people to the, the roads and highways that have the most capacity, we will look at it that way. Right now, we don't. We, we struggle to. We have a lot of cut through, and we've, we've struggled frankly as a city to deal with cut through traffic. We're getting there slowly but surely, making some solutions, having some conversations because it impacts so many of our communities. I'll tell you, my community, and one of my neighbors is here, we've had probably conversations with the city probably longer than I've been on council around cut through traffic in our neighborhood. Because not only does it touch our neighborhood, but it touches several other neighborhoods as well. And so these, these conversations are complex, and as you can imagine, not everybody agrees and sees, sees things the same way. And so a Bluestone connector and the conversation about connectors is not just a funding issue, even though that's probably the biggest hurdle. It is a, a large community conversation about what is best. I do know that we need additional solutions for certain corridors in our city. I've always thought and still continue to think, a series of connectors to much larger capacity roads might be a solution. But that's a conversation that we need to have and continue to probably have as a community. And then we need to find out who can help us fund it. Because again, this is not something that we can lay, going back to some of the earlier questions, we can't lay at the feet of our commercial and residential taxpayers.
Next one's going to go to Councilmember Bagley. Rush hour traffic has really increased by the Duke and Prince area. People are running red lights all of the time now, too many near misses, pedestrians and cars. Will you consider installing cameras to catch these reckless drivers? Please do something, the situation is only getting worse.
Yeah, thank you for this question, and we've gotten a few 3-1-1s on this as well, and it has led to an opportunity for me to learn more about our authority and our ability and our current status in this area. So just, just a couple, just a little bit of context, and then I'll address sort of Duke and Prince directly. We do have, and I'm going to invite the mayor to cut me off if I, if I go astray here, but we do have the ability to place red light cameras in our city. It is actually dictated by our population, the way that the authority is delegated. It's one camera per every 10,000 residents, I think. So we have the authority for up to 15, 16 cameras, depending on how that math is done. And at present, we have, I think, six of them in place. I, I do have tests sort of educating me and providing some more context. So factually, we, we, there is an option to add more red light cameras in the city. And I think it's, so the question now is one of effectiveness and implementation and funding. You know, what we've seen with our speed zone cameras, which we only recently got authority to do in school zones and construction areas, so I just, I want to just take the broader moment to sort of, you know, separate the two things. We, we only got that authority recently, speed cameras, and only in school zones and construction areas. We have launched five of them, and they sort of pay for themselves, which is, is a nice feature of those. Basically, the volume of violations that they generate matches the cost that it is to, to process the violations. So that's that piece. And I believe in this budget, we are considering five more and expanding that program. So to return to the red light cameras, we haven't maxed out that ability, but we are in a period of evaluating sort of their effectiveness at pausing red light running. One of the problems with this methodology is honestly, the, if somebody doesn't pay it, they don't pay it. It's, it's, there's no real, you know, I can't, we can't boot their car, you know, so if, if we're, you know, we find it somewhere, sort of thing. So we are, staff is evaluating both the effectiveness of the tool to meet the end, which is, you know, if there is a red light camera, will it reduce red light running? And also, the other question that I have pending is, where would the tool be most effective? I think, so it's to be continued a little bit on that answer, there's some active questions pending before staff. And then in terms of enforcement, this kind of comes back around to like the CBA, to staffing, to APD, you know, recruitment and enrollment. Our current traffic team, is a technical term for them, but sort of is, is understaffed at the moment. And so enforcement in, through all methods, including, including officers, you know, parked intersections, officers pulling people over, is just an area that we're still working to try to, you know, get to where we need to be. Is that responsive? Yeah.
Yeah. And just to put another point on it, because Councilmember Bagley covered it really well. There, there are some interesting studies on red light cameras. They show they tend to increase rear end collisions, but they actually reduce the more dangerous side collisions. And so it's an interesting kind of trade off that, that communities have to have when they think about them, so, but there are some interesting studies out there on it. So Councilman Chapman.
Yeah, and if you, if you really want a kind of real life example of what, what could happen in the future here, well, I don't want to say that, but if you want a real life example of the change that you can see, is you look at DC, our former, one of our former city managers, Rashad Young, left Alexandria, moved to DC, I want to say maybe in six months. They had installed probably close to 100 new speed cameras, red light cameras across the city. And we're getting fines and, you know, catching people. I, I would hesitate to say that it saw, you saw a drastic improvement in terms of red light running and speed. If you go up New York Avenue, there's a speed camera that'll catch you there. If you, I hate to say it.
Sounds like experience.
For sure, for sure.
A safe space.
Not to, not to tell too much on myself, but you know, if, if you're a Virginia resident and they have this issue right now, if you're a Virginia resident and you don't pay that bill, there's nothing they're going to do to you, unfortunately. Because enforcement for them only is for DC residents. And what they found is they have a backlog of millions of dollars in unpaid fines from not only Virginia residents and Maryland residents, but DC residents as well. And so enforcement is a huge bit of the issue, because if you install these cameras, have these fines, and people don't pay them, and there's no real effort to have that enforcement, you really haven't done, you haven't made the, the, the real basic change that you were looking for. The basic change is, is safety, is people slowing down, is people not running red lights. You've added to kind of the bureaucracy of, of government and put a lot of load on your staff where they don't have or they're not empowered to actually enforce and be able to get frankly, some revenues from the work that's being done. And so there are challenges to, to, to moving super fast with this and not making sure all the parts are aligned. I for one would, would not be upset to see more cameras, because I do think there's an opportunity to better educate and enforce those folks who desire to be reckless. Because there are some, you've probably driven past them and had to punk at them because they don't care. But those are the individuals that we need to figure out how we target and make sure their behavior stops on our roads.
Okay, I'm going to handle this one. Who is responsible for cleaning up after free meals served by Christchurch? There is always trash, empty styrofoam, plastic bags left on the street after meals served. Thank you. So Christchurch did move their operation outside during the pandemic, and, and I have heard from a number of neighboring residents and businesses over the last several months to a year about some of the impacts of that. I've been in touch with the, the folks at Catholic Charities, and I know they have been trying to get things back inside. They have some volunteer challenges and things like that. I'll certainly reach out to them and see what the status of those efforts are. They are responsible for keeping the street clean and, and making sure that, that their operation does not impact the, the surrounding neighborhood, so. All right, I'm going to give this one to Councilwoman Gaskins. The school board is considering the advisability of staggered terms of office. Two questions. One, what are your views on staggered terms for members of city council? Two, what are your views on conducting elections for mayor and city council on a nonpartisan basis, meaning that candidates would run without being identified by party membership? Thank you.
Two questions I don't think I've really thought about recently, but I guess what I would say is when I have been following the discussion happening with our school board, one of the main reasons I continue to hear them cite is, you know, it's the challenge they face related to turnover and consistency and being able to have that historical knowledge is part of the reason why they are looking at staggered terms. I think you run the risk of that too, in, in a council and a mayor where we're all up at once. And so, I mean, I'd be open to hearing more about how people think about that and the discussion. I think what we have seen though is that you see folks who have been able to continue to get elected, that we do still have that historical knowledge. So I don't think we face the same challenge or increase or intense turnover as we see at the school board level. But, you know, I'd, I'd be open to having conversations about that. In terms of, what was the second part of the question?
Nonpartisan elections.
Nonpartisan election. Actually, you know, it's interesting, when I used to work at the National League of Cities, they're like, so the National League of Cities, it's an organization that represents 19,000 cities, towns, and counties all across the country. And they used to have this slogan that was like, a pothole is neither Democrat or Republican, and it doesn't matter in terms of, you know, your party affiliation to be able to fix the roads or to fix the sewer. As I have gotten into this work, I do think though, there are different approaches that we take. And I think it's important for the public to know the approaches, the ideas, and the content and ways in which their elected officials will approach the issue. Whether that is, you know, if we're talking about street repair, it's not just the repair, but there are equity implications to where we are doing the work, when we are doing the work, who bears the cost or the burden of certain programs that we look at or consider. And so for me, I actually think, and not just in terms of running myself, but as a voter that wants to be informed about the people I'm putting in office to make decisions, I actually think it, I would be opposed to having nonpartisan elections at the council level. I think it's important for us to be clear and transparent about where people stand, what they stand for, and how they're going to bring that perspective to the decisions that they make that impact each of us.
Okay, Councilman Pike, then Councilman Gary, then Councilman Chapman.
So thank you. These are interesting questions. You know, I think a lot about the structure of our elections and the processes thereof. When the, when my counterpart on the school board asked me about their process, I was, I told them, I thought the, if they're looking at staggered terms, what they should be looking at were four-year terms with half the school board up in year one, half the school board up in year three, to create, you know, a situation where you don't have exhaustion of the electorate, where you're having election every year for the same office over and over and over again. So if we wanted to look at staggered terms for council, I think the same sort of model would make some sense, the mayor in three up in year one, three up in year three. But, you know, I think those are sorts of questions that we should have conversations about, and how does that impact, you know, what people think about, you know, what people think about the impacts of something like that. Regarding the question of nonpartisan elections, I completely agree with Councilwoman Gaskins. And I also think that, you know, the folks who are in this room, who are watching this online, y'all probably vote a lot, and you probably pay a lot of attention to how you vote, right? And that's great, and we want to encourage people to be very actively involved in electoral process. But, you know, not every state, not every state in the country is as proactive about getting information out to voters about the candidates that, as, as others. I, in my day job, I'm chief of staff to member of Congress from California. And in California, on the ballot, they list the candidate's party, they list their occupation, and candidates can actually pay a few bucks and have a brief bio printed in a booklet that is available to every single person who votes, and it's sent out to every voter. It's like maximal amount of information, you know, accessible to the people who want to choose to vote. We don't go that far in Virginia, but I do think it is valuable that we provide, you know, party identification in some level. It's not on the ballot, but it is certainly, we have a primary process and we make this known, because at a baseline, that means that every voter should have some sort of sense about what our general ideological outlook is, what our personal priorities and, and policy goals might be. So I'm always in favor of more information being available to voters, so I do think that keeping the partisan system is probably the best idea.
Councilman Gary.
So I'm going to start with the, the second question. When you go to vote for council next year, we won't have letters next to our name. We, it's already, that's just what it is. So to that question, we don't have letters next to our names when you vote for us on council, so if, period. In terms of staggered terms for the school board, I have some strong feelings about this. I've been very clear with my school board colleagues that I am not supportive of changes unless they're willing to reduce the number of members on their board. Arlington County, which has about twice the size of our student population, has five members. Loudoun County, which I believe has around nine members, has like three or four times the number of students that we have. To me, it's absolutely ridiculous that we have nine people on there, and this is part of what leads to so much discontinuity and turnover. The other part of it, in the school board's own research, they've shown the school board members are not willing to run for more than one term. The vast majority of them are either one or two terms, and that's it. So my thing to them is run again, you know, win your election. This, the council, we're, all of us are up along with the mayor every single election, and there's been a lot of continuity on this council. on this council for a long time. Yes, in the last six years, there's been some transition. But we've also have folks that have been on the council for 10-plus years. Not to call anybody out, but, you know.
I feel like we're getting targeted.
But it, it's important, right? I am a big believer in terms of continuity and institutional knowledge. It's important. And it's good to have a mix of folks, right? And so this is just kind of what, what's going on. So I would be, I'm just gonna say it, I'd be opposed to, to the changes that the school board is, is proposing at this time.
All right. We got, oh, sorry, Councilman Chapman. All right. We've got eight minutes left here. I want to try to get some more questions in, so.
So I think for me, right now, I am against, I'm against the school board kind of leading the conversation on this issue. I think their focus really needs to be the children. And I'll tell them that, and I've said that to them before. You know, I don't understand, and the community overall does not understand how this change would impact our children's academic excellence. You give me a concrete argument around that, you've, you've got a conversation with me. But I have not heard that, and I'll speak to the camera, I have not heard that conversation yet. And so school board members need to meet with all of us and talk to us about how messing with elections is going to help our children. Because that's what we hear. That's what we're worried about. This, what this community is worried about. We're worried about our children. We're worried about our teachers, as you've heard through some of the questions. And so making that case to our community is what they need to do. That has not been done yet. And so I'm still against them leading this conversation. This should be a joint conversation, because what you don't want to have is one body doing one thing and another body doing something else. I don't think that's necessarily appropriate. In terms of party identity, as I think my, my colleague kind of wrapped it up, you're, you're not going to have it. You'll, you'll be able to adjust and see, hopefully figure out what party folks are from. I know, in, in being a candidate and working campaigns here in the city for quite some time, you do have candidates that pop out there, and they will not be upfront about what party they're aligned with. We have had folks get on council and do that. Again, I hate to use the word, but that's a hustle. Like, nobody should be hustling you about who they are as a candidate. They should be able to put that on their sign. They should be proud to say, this is what I believe locally as well as nationally. As we understand, there are some real strong implications if you 100% believe with the Republican Party at a national level. Let's be honest about that. And if that's who you are, and that's what you are as a candidate, you need to be willing to say that. And need to say that to every voter in a strong way, not to hide behind that. And we've seen that with our local elections. And so there's some, some danger to that, because as I've seen intimately, I've seen a candidate get yelled at by a voter who believed that that person was an independent when they were in fact, a Republican. That hustle happens here. And it will happen as long as, you know, party identity is not known and candidates don't feel obliged to tell you who they are. The candidates you have, generally speaking, will. They will tell you who they are, and they'll tell you what they're about. But there are going to be some folks that are very interested in this seat versus what you want and what your ideals are and aligning with those.
All right. Councilmember Bagley's going to say one sentence, and then I'm going to move to another question.
Well, I am pro-choice, and so are my colleagues here on the dais. And that mattered earlier this year. And I think it's a good example where it's not a pothole, but it became relevant in local politics. So.
All right. All right. Councilwoman Aguirre, two questions here. What is the status of the racial and social action plan called for in Resolution 2974? All Alexandria committed to racial and social equity. Second one, during the colloquy around adoption of Resolution 2974, all Alexandria committed to race and social equity. City council identified wealth accumulation, health conditions and educational attainment to be among the deepest inequities still at work within the city. Is there consensus among councils the most serious health conditions in the city that must be addressed? First question is, what is the status of the plan?
So I'll take the first question and punt a little bit, but the status of the plan is that it's ongoing, right? When we did this plan, we put in some, some measurables so that we hold ourselves accountable, and we're still working on it. But every single one of our departments has race and social equity leads that helps guide the work that each department is doing, so that they are using a race and social equity lens, not just in their budgeting, but also in their operation and how their operation impacts our community. So that's the first one. The second one, you know, I, we're, we're seven individual people. I can't say that there's consensus, because we each might take a different approach. But when we're talking about these three specific things, you know, it's kind of, where do you start, right? You have to have health to be able to do anything. But wealth is also intricately connected to that, right? A lot of times, wealth, well, you have a home, you have a steady address. You have a steady address, well, you get mail from your doctor's office, right? You don't have a steady address, you might miss the mail from your doctor's appointment. All of a sudden, you're not showing up. So all these things are connected. Again, stable home, you have a place to study as a young child, right? You have a quiet space to be able to do your learning. Environment matters. So I, I can't, you know, I can't say that there's a consensus, other than there's a consensus around these three things and that we have to work on all of them as we're moving forward in parallel. And know that even if we're working on them in parallel, that they are intimately interconnected as well. And that there are multiple things that go into each one of these. The last eight years, I worked in Medicaid, and one of the big things that we talked about on top of health equity was the social determinants of health. The social determinants of health means it's not just going to the doctor for a checkup or the dentist for, get your teeth checked. It means, can you even get there? Do you have the transportation to get there? When you get there, are there language barriers? When you get there, do you even have insurance, right? There are all of these different things that go into it. So yeah, there's, there's, there's a lot of work to do, but I'd be curious if any of my colleagues want to add on.
Councilwoman Gaskins.
Thank you. I just wanted to throw out a quick plug for the Alexandria Community Health Improvement Plan, or RCHIP. RCHIP is really the community's roadmap and action plan for how we will address some of the most pressing health issues in the community. And Councilmember Aguirre is right. While there's not always consensus among sort of the approach that we take or where we go, I think this is a really important document where they've said, you know, in that plan, they said it's poverty, housing and mental health with, which overlaps with some of the very things that were talked about in terms of wealth in, in the question. And so I would just encourage folks too, to also look at that plan. What it maps out for each area is a set of tactics that we believe, well, that the community has said they believe are really important for addressing that issue. It also, on the website, I believe, maybe a couple months ago, we saw a progress report that says kind of what are the different departments that are working on that part of the plan? What are the community groups and nonprofits that are also working in alignment with us as part of that plan? I do know that the racial and social equity office has been involved, and they've helped create tools, like an equity index map and other great resources that are part of helping us measure our project, our progress and impact. So I would just encourage folks, it's a great resource. That's another part of this conversation around health. What are the most pressing issues? And then what are the things that both as a government we can do, but also in partnership with community that we can do to address some of these major issues?
All right. So I have a final question that I'm going to ask you ones, to give a one-word answer to. But the, thank you. Thank you all for, for being here today and for all the questions you all posed. Thanks to our staff for all supporting this operation. We appreciate everyone doing that. There was a question submitted, said, just to say thank you for all the wonderful things you all do for our community, 24 by 7 with full-time jobs elsewhere. I honestly don't know where you all find the energy. What do you do for fun? Councilmember Pike.
Uh, yeah, I like to
A one-word answer. What do you do for fun?
Oh.
What do you do for fun?
I'm not in one word.
Cook?
There we go.
I'm sorry, my fun can't be summarized in one word. I do talk. I'll say play.
All right. I run. Councilman Chapman.
I'd say my business.
Dog.
Food.
Thank you all very much. Have a great weekend, everyone. Thank you.